Good evening and thank you for joining us for the June 21st meeting of the School District of the City of Dearborn Board. It is 7:03. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hassan Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick D. Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Adam Moser.
Here.
Trustee Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
President James Thorpe.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Shannon Peterson, Executive Director of Student Achievement, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. You're getting all three of us tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Superintendent's Updates.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well as we get into the summer season. I want to start with our traditional moment of silence, but I am going to say that this will be the last time I do this. I think that we've been doing it for a year and a half unless we have a, you know, a death of staffers, which hopefully never will happen, but I think we've protected everyone in the community, in the district, and we are recognizing over 600,000 deaths from COVID and 20,000 in Michigan. So this will be the last time I formally put this on here unless, again, we hope we never have a tragedy, but I think it's been appropriate that we've done this for the last year and a half as we've continued to, you know, we know many individuals who have dealt with this tragedy personally, all of us, so another moment of silence to those who have suffered from COVID. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I'm going to start with on the agenda items, retirement. We have Marilyn Christu, 22 years of service, Nadine Clark, 25 years of service, Mary Gass, 20 years of service, Yvonne Ravenscraft, over 29 years of service. Thank you to them for their years of service and congratulations. I want to mention as well, it's on the agenda tonight is school start times. Appreciate the work with the DFT to come up with times, and many of us went to the National School Board Conference a few years ago and we saw the research on that and showing that we do not want our high school students getting up, you know, for 7:15 start time. So appreciate the support of the board. It's on the agenda today. And I got to give Mark Andrews and his team, Mr. Wall, Rick Sotras out of transportation a lot of credit because they made this happen. Without transportation making a change, it wouldn't have been possible. So we're very excited to change the start times and we appreciate the support of everyone, including the board and the different union groups as well. Mode of instruction is on there as well, and you'll note that the action item is officially, you know, the legislation that was passed last August was we had to approve the mode of instruction. We decided to put it on the agenda as well for the fall, just so that everyone knows the direction where, even though it's not required by law, I thought it was very transparent to, again, put it out there and let people know, you know, subject to change. We know that there could be changes with the Health Department, but generally, we're planning for the full five days instruction, students coming back in some sense of normalcy for the fall, and then we did offer that virtual option that parents could take advantage of as well. So that is on the agenda. And the other thing we have is just celebrating our graduates official. I know you all were at the graduations. I know the trustees made some comments. Everyone did a great job and we got to thank the families, the parents, and you know, the nice thing, we're through it now, but it didn't rain. We all know that that is a, you know, I can say it now, I wouldn't have said it before because I didn't want to jinx anything, but we're used to doing the ceremonies on the field anyway, so we're experienced with that. Congratulations to all the graduates.
While it didn't rain, 85 and sun, I think, every single time. So just a little bit earlier, for those that are watching from home, we had a ceremony for our collegiate academy students right before this. It was the best weather of any of the ones we did this year.
And I know we have Principal Alcadre's here. She had the nice breeze. She planned for the nice breeze at Fortson that evening. Thank you for making that work, Principal. So I'm going to go on to non-agenda items, and I want to mention about the masks and regulations. So even though the governor put out rules, we still are under the Health Department regulations. They're supposed to be putting out some guidelines tomorrow. So everyone has to understand that, you know, they may say everywhere, but the schools are under different guidelines and jurisdiction. So we are still under the mask mandate, but we are allowing in the summer for no masks outside. That's what we can do. Now, if we get other guidance tomorrow, then we'll review it and we may make other decisions. So my team and I have been talking about it, so right now, and that's why we're all wearing them still, because it's still required under the regulations, but that may be changing, and we are going to be putting out for our staff for them to voluntarily be able to submit their vaccine card if they received it, because I can tell you right now, like the Myosha, you do not have to sign in to the building if you're fully vaccinated. We don't know, but there may be other things that may or may not involve masks or other things in schools related to having fully vaccinated individuals. So more to come on that. We have to follow the guidance of the state, but they have not put that out officially, so we did hear that's coming out tomorrow. So when people are asking, and I did send out a message to our staff on that issue. I just also want to say appreciation for our awesome staff, for everybody here. Let's just maybe a round of applause. We got through it. We got through this board. We got through probably the craziest year and we did it in a safe manner. So I thank you, the board, for their leadership and obviously our team and the community, the teachers, the staff, the, you know, the community that stepped up, the parents, everybody really did, and it was a tough year. So this just happened last week, and I didn't know a lot about this, but I did get some information, and I want to make a statement on Juneteenth that was just approved, I believe, on Friday, Thursday or Friday, by the federal government. So I want to acknowledge and commend the House, Senate, and President Biden for taking action to officially make Juneteenth a national holiday. These actions are even more significant, given that we as a nation are once again engaged in a very important dialogue regarding race, discrimination, and equality for all. Making Juneteenth a national holiday provides the opportunity to keep this important day relevant in our nation's history. This past weekend, you may have seen communities around the country in here in Dearborn celebrated the holiday. In the years ahead, we will look forward to commemorating this holiday, so I want to mention that. And I also have Ms. Ali Bazey, who's going to come up with, I believe, Mr. Khalid Abdullah and/or anybody from HR, just to talk in general about the, you know, we just, we have on the agenda tonight a recommendation for the Etzel Ford Principal, but also I thought it would be a good opportunity to just speak in general terms of how we implement the process in the district when we go through hiring. I want to mention this, that we have multiple committees, but ultimately what happens is the committees are input for me. So, you know, and we say this all the time, is we ask people to get, you know, give your input. I will say, it has changed my mind many times, where potential recommendations, I think I've hired now about 70 different individuals in the district since I've been superintendent, and that even goes even higher if you include the time I spent working for Brian Wiston as HR when we changed that process years ago. So it's all information and data that comes to me, and then ultimately it comes to the board. It's a recommendation I make for the board, and we always tell people, you know, please get involved, because I read all the sheets and all the information, but, you know, an individual may or may not get your first or second choice. It just depends on how the data comes through. So I'm going to let them speak to the process, Ms. Ali Bazey.
Good evening. I also have Director of Human Resources, non-instructional, Ms. Nada Alamedine with us. Nada and the other Director of HR and Instructional usually facilitate the committees on the second round, and also Director of Student Services, Aiden Schur typically does that, and every once in a while, when we're shorthanded, David Muston, and we'll jump in and assist as well. So on the first slide, you'll see these are all the organizations that we post all of our administrative positions to. Sometimes we have additional ones if it's more specific to trades or vocational areas, so we'll seek out whichever organization where we have the greatest chance of reaching the greatest, largest size population. So these are all the organizations that we post to. And the process begins with an application review committee. The application review committee consists of the executive directors, a few members of the instructional cabinet, the Director of Student Services, Director of EL, Compensatory Education, the other directors in HR as well. Everybody reviews the applications on their own and they submit names of, like, say, the top 10, 12, depending on the depth of the pool. It varies on the number, so we don't set a number because we want to get the most desirable, highest number of desirable candidates to interview. And so we go through those lists that are submitted by everyone that reviewed the applications, and the names that appear multiple times are selected for an interview. The next step is there's a round one, which is the Administrative Committee. The Administrative Committee always has ADSA representation, and it has a variety of cabinet members and executive directors, and this committee interviews all the applicants that were selected. And then from that committee, it gets narrowed down to however the rankings play out. Usually it's four candidates that move to the next round, but if there's a tie, there could sometimes be five that move to the next round because of a tie that occurred in the rankings from the first Administrative Committee, round one. So round two, you have Parent Committee, Parent and Community Committee is one. You have Staff Committee, which includes the DFT representation of teachers, instructional staff, and then also the non-instructional support staff is included, and also the engineer union is also included in that Staff Committee. If it's a high school level position that we're filling, then we have a Student Committee as well, and those are all students from the high school with the vacancy, administrative vacancy. From that round, we take all the scores that are given. There's a scoring sheet, and it's private, and whether or not the committee members discuss their scores is up to them. Nobody has to share. It's very confidential, and they submit comments and their notes, and then also their ranking sheet. We take all those rankings and we put them on our ranking sheet, spreadsheet, and we get an average. So then we can get an idea of how each candidate placed in each committee, and whichever candidates placed the highest in most of the committees moved to the final round with the superintendent. And same thing, sometimes it's two candidates that move to the final round, but if there's a tie, then there's three candidates that move to the final round with Dr. Maleko, the superintendent, and the executive director of that feeder track. And that's what I said, the top ranking candidates. In the beginning of every interview committee, this is the disclaimer that we read. We read aloud, and it's also provided when we were in person, it was handed to each person in their folder. Actually, Trustee Petlicoff recommended this about six years ago, this disclaimer. And really, it just goes through the process, and the disclaimer's intent is to ensure that there's as consistent a process as possible. And we always emphasize the highlighted and bold sentence that we're all part of a process, and we give all of our input to the superintendent, and we should be writing down whatever we want him to know, and that ultimately the final recommendation comes from the superintendent to the board for approval. And you can go to the next one, please. And then we strive to have a consistent process. Every applicant completes a writing sample where they're given a set amount of time, which is typically 30 minutes. So everyone gets 30 minutes. They get the writing prompt at the start of 30 minutes. They complete the response to the writing prompt, and then they submit it within the 30 minutes. Candidates are also permitted to ask questions only in the final round, and the reason for that is that if they ask, if the first candidate asks a question and then we answer it in the first round, then that candidate technically has an advantage over the other candidates with the information that was provided. So we ask candidates to save all their questions for the final round with the superintendent. It's the same questions for all candidates in the first two rounds. It becomes a little more flexible when they're in the small group with Dr. Maleko and the executive director. The disclaimer is read at the start of each committee, and the committee meets a half hour before the interview process begins. They're given a draft of questions, but then they take that draft and they change it. They add questions, they remove questions, they change questions, and so each committee has a unique set of questions based on what that committee agreed upon. All ranking sheets, comment sheets, notes are forwarded to the superintendent. And I think that's it. And Nada, would you like to add anything? You're welcome to. I didn't know, I didn't know Nada was going to be here. She's on vacation this week, so.
People on vacation don't get to talk. So much to anything, everyone. Yeah, I just want to say, it is a consistent process. It is a consistent process, and this is exactly how it goes in details. If you have any questions for us, we're open for questions.
I've got a question for you. How long have we used this process, and where did we get this process from? Was this something that was the, like, State of Michigan put out, or how did we find it?
I can speak to that because it was developed when Brian Wiston was superintendent, when I was HR. And what we did is we just kind of talked to other districts and what they were doing, and what we find from candidates is that we have probably one of the most, what I consistently get is that we have one of the most rigorous processes out there from any district because of the multiple committee that go into the final decision. And I will say, it was, you know, our late, great, you know, we all miss him, Brian Wiston, who kind of came up with the, you know, the committees, so it wasn't just, because when I got hired as an administrator, it was just an administrative. When I was Assistant Principal, there was not community, community committee, parent, staff. It was just administration. So that, it was kind of a way to give input. So I would say that probably changed about 10 years ago, added these committees. And then we added on purpose, this was my doing, I wanted to bring in a student committee. So for the high schools, and you guys all know, tonight we're presenting on the council, so I actually, that was my idea, to be honest, that we wanted student, but for the high school.
Trustee Petlicoff.
I would like to point out that the actual guidelines, administrative guidelines, give just the superintendent the authority to appoint a, this process is something in addition to, but the board, it's already in our bylaws and in our guidelines, that it's the superintendent's responsibility, and we recognize and acknowledge that it's his responsibility to make the appointments and fill the vacancies. So this is not something that is a constitutional requirement or anything like that. It's something that each individual district makes up as they go along. We have evolved it over time.
Trustee Berry, were you going to say something?
I was going to ask, Trustee Petlicoff, just to answer my question. As I say, Dr. Maleko, what was the, what did the process look like? But, you know, you've been on the board for a long time, so obviously you know what it looked like before, so.
Yeah, and before it was just basically the superintendent after administrative interviews who did the selection. There was none of these committees, none.
Yeah, because, and like I said, that's how I got hired as an administrator. It was 2002, I remember, and it was just, at the time, it was Paul Smith, Marlene Lewis, and it was some principals, and that was it. And then they went to the superintendent, and I got recommended by, by the time it was just before John Erst came in, Jeremy Hughes, but Carl Stuf was the interim principal, excuse me, superintendent.
Yeah. We also have Mr. Khalid Abdullah here with us this evening. He has participated, he represented ADSA most recently for one of our administrative postings, and he was part of the process, and he'll speak to that just briefly. And then also, I just coincidentally, I know David Higgins is here. He's the president of the ADSA and has participated recently as well. Also, Hiam Alcadre has participated recently as well. I just happen to notice there's all these people in the audience that have participated at one time or the other, and it's really important to note that for the union representation, we have nothing to do with that selection, so that happens through the union. So, for example, Jane Mazza will go to the building representative of whatever building has the vacancy and request the names of the DFT members that would like to represent that building on the committee. And then when they reach out to me, I say, you have to go to the union. So we stay completely out of that. Same thing for Alarini and the DFSE. Somebody reaches out to us, we say, you have to go to your union president, and same thing for the ADSA. So everyone knows that when it comes to the unions, we do not get involved in who represents the unions on the committees.
And if I could just say, I want to thank Mr. Khalid Abdullah for stepping up. He's done a great job in a few months as we had transitioned as the interim principal at Etzel Ford, and really appreciate his leadership, and he's here because the principal does play a part in getting the students and the parents situated from the committee. And I know you came in in a very difficult time with vaccines and graduation and everything, and you've done a wonderful job, so I want to commend you for that work, and I know everyone's been speaking highly of how well-led in a very short timeframe, so.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for those kind words. It was a team effort. So going back to the process, I was, they had asked me to reach out to the staff, and what we did is we did contact our union rep for DFT, and they provided us the list of staff that wanted to participate in the interviews. I also reached out to all three feeder schools, their communities, their parents, and we requested equal amount of parents from each community to take place in, to take part in the interview committee. And finally, we did recommend a couple of students to HR, if they would also like to sit on part of the student committee. So that's all I have to add, so if you have any questions.
Is there a separate student committee, or do they get grouped in with the parents?
Separate, for high school. We do not do student committee, we do it for middle or elementary.
Sure, okay.
We do it for high school. Okay.
Trustee Watts. One second, Trustee McDonald.
So for those parents who are probably wondering, how would they, if that's something that they would like to be part of for the schools, how do they then become part of the conversation if they wanted to be part of the parents?
So I reached out to certain parents that I know were active in the community, and so I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't, we didn't send a broad email or roll call or anything. I just reached out to each, from each community and kind of engaged some of those parents that I know were active throughout the school year, so.
Thank you.
So like the PTA or other parents are more likely to be the contact, right? Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to add that prior to serving on the board, I was part of a parent committee for a principal's process, and it is very rigorous. The parent input was tremendous, and I'm glad that that was added. And it does take some time, so I want to thank any of the parents and students that are involved, because it does improve the process, and it is a fair process, and it is, again, rigorous. So thanks to everybody who gets involved.
President Thorpe.
Yes, Trustee Moser.
I have a question for HR Directors and Dr. Maleko. When there is an internal candidate who obviously has been working at the district and has references to the administrative, the R. higher-ups, do we have those administrative folks recuse themselves from the process, or how do they remove their internal bias when they review those candidates?
Well, having, I'm going to just speak from my experience, having worked in the district for nearly 25 years now, no. If it's a husband or wife, then we would have them, like, or immediate family member, then yes, they would have to recuse. We recently had a teacher volunteer to be on the DFT committee staff that was interviewing one of our recently filled administrative positions, and his wife was interviewing. Fortunately, I knew that, and it caught my eye, and I said, oh, we can't have husband and wife interviewing each other. But as far as being in the district, that is an advantage of going through the process. Anytime you've been in a district, you've made relationships, you've made connections, and you've proven a lot of things that an interview could never show and could never tell. And so that definitely would be an advantage for any internal candidate through the interview process. It could help them or it could hurt them, you know, and that's where, that's the history of, or that's like, you know, the typical part, component of interviewing within a district this size.
And if I could just add that, because we know our people, remember, they're evaluating, so I have access to that as well. So the individuals that we recommend would have gone through a very rigorous evaluation process as well, and I have access to that. I would say this, that it does take a little longer when they're external candidates, because you are going to be making a lot of phone calls, not only the references, and I make the phone calls anyway internally, the difference is when they're internal candidates, it's easy just to, because I know everybody, I mean, we know everyone. So we have that relationship with whether it's the principal or, you know, maybe I didn't work directly with them, but let's just say, Ms. Alcadre, I called her on a recent recommendation to find out how that individual did, and it's easy, I just pick up the phone. Now with external candidates, then there's a lot more phone calls and a lot more information that you try to acquire. And not only, one of the things that I've built is, and you guys, I believe, are all aware, that I have a lot of good network across the state. So not only will I call the references, but I call the people that might know the person that may have worked someone to get that information, and I think that's very important. And our former superintendent, Mr. Wiston, did the same thing. Sometimes him and I would call together at times, so to make sure. And then the separate piece is everyone has to go through the criminal background check and, you know, professional responsibilities, and that is a state requirement, so that's separate from the reference checks.
Trustee Petlicoff.
And actually, this is no different than anybody bringing somebody in, recommending them for hire. When you come in and say, I know this person, I know their qualities, I know their background kind of thing, you're going to get that kind of preference for someone that you know personally how they, so that isn't necessarily a bad thing. And like I said, our guidelines don't require any of this, quite frankly. We give the authority to the superintendent. We have done this and evolved this over time from when I started on the board in 2008, precisely because there was a lot of complaining that there was preferences being given and people who had relationships already built and nobody else got an opportunity. So we built this committee system in order to give everybody a fairer shot at applying and succeeding in moving forward in the promotion process. So I think that we have gone above and beyond in the requirements of doing our due diligence in the selection process.
There are some examples of external applicants that are success stories, would be like Dr. Dan Patterson, and at the time, Executive Director Fatimi Fraj had interviewed as well, and that would be an example of where an external candidate got the position over an internal candidate, and it all worked out. It all worked out wonderfully for everyone.
Mr. Tom Walls?
And I was just going to say, let me give Tom the shout out. No. Mr. Tom Wall was another success story.
And he tried to be sitting in our seat.
Yeah, yeah, he applied to be on the board, actually.
Principal, Mr. Adam Martin.
And I was just going to say, Mr. Adam Martin, when I was standing here, and so.
Other examples.
Dr. Maleko's network really helps with external applicants, because really, how do you know? You don't really know. It's like, you never know a person until you live with them. Well, it's the same thing, you never really know a person until you work with them, so.
Yeah. I have two more questions. The first one, if we post a position and we don't get a candidate that meets all of the requirements, or is not there, doesn't have all of the qualifications, then what do we do?
There have been, we just recently reposted a non-instructional position. Nada, do you want to speak to which position we just reposted? Non-classified, non-instructional supervisor for, oh, Trades and Labor? No, not Trades and Labor. We just reposted.
The manager for, it's the, isn't it Gary Shelton?
Yeah, Trades and Labor Manager. That one has had very few applicants, like seven, and the applicants that we did receive were not qualified, so in that case, we had no choice but to repost.
And Payroll Manager position, we posted it a few times, multiple times, because we had a few people apply and get into that position, so we have done that. people apply and get into that position. So we have done that before.
My second question is, there is a perception that when people didn't apply for the principalship position, that it's already been predetermined. Do you see that perception?
Absolutely. That perception, trustee, has been around forever. And so one of the parts in that disclaimer, so there was a time, now this is many, many years ago, many, many administrations ago, I remember sitting in the process as a teacher and participating, and little, like I had a completely different perspective at the time. And I remember having to go around and announce your ranking. And I remember being, it was very clear who was supposed to be recommended. So through the years, Dr. Maleko, when he had been in the executive director in HR, had changed that process under Brian Wiston, and then we fine tuned it again. And honestly, trustee Moser, I've heard that, I've heard that through every, every round. Now, we've hired probably 70 administrator, or recommended 70 administrators in this seven years that I've been in this position, and there wasn't one time when I didn't hear that perception. When I got this position, I was told at Kroger that everybody already knew that you and Dr. Maleko were best friends and that you already had the job, when the reality was, I never knew Dr. Maleko until I was the principal at Woodworth, and he was in HR. And I really didn't think I was going to get the job. But that's the perception. And so we can tighten our process as much as possible, and we have to always consider the feedback and do what we can. And it is a frustrating aspect of the, of the hiring process, but it's always been said.
Yeah. And I could say, I'm not going to say which building, but there was one decision I made a few years ago that everyone said, oh, they already knew who it was going to be. Guess what? It wasn't the person. And then when I made the recommendation, then later on, they said, oh, no, that was the person that you always, you know what I mean? So on the street, it was, you already knew. And I ended up going with, because when they get back, this is the disclaimer too, is that when the finalists get to me, we make it known that the two or three, I will, I will choose any one of them out of the three. So once they get to me, it's not like a rank order per se. I have the data from the committees, but I ultimately will make the recommendation of the board based on my final interview and my calls and everything that I do, regardless of what the committee, now a lot of times, the committee may agree with the decision, but I have another one going through right now where the committees actually disagree. So then that's where it comes to me, one of our positions, not the one recommended tonight, but another one of our vacancies where I'm looking at the committees and they're not aligned. The parents are opposite of the staff, you know, this kind of thing. So then I have to really analyze that and determine who may be the best fit, not just based on the committee, but what, what is the quality and the qualifications as an educator in the district, who's going to lead that school. And so that, I take that very, that's a very important decision that I will make. And I never rush to judgment either. You guys have probably heard me say, I'm going to sleep on it. It's going to be a couple nights. We're going to make calls. It's never, I will never make a recommendation right after the interview. Never get that from, going to be thoughtful and going through, looking at all the data. And I do read, they send me all the sheets. So, you know, people don't have to fill out the sheets, and they don't have to say how they voted or anything, but I do get them. And so if they do make comments, then I read all the comments.
We also run into that, of course, with the board. How many times have people come up to us and said, oh, I, we knew that you guys were going to vote this way or that way, whether it was COVID or anything else. So I think it's, it's a common thing that, that people sometimes go back to. Additional questions?
Just a final comment.
Yes, trustee Barry.
Thank you for the information. Very valuable information, and thank you trustee Petlicov for giving us a little bit of history. I just feel that this report could have waited for next month. I don't think it was appropriate to be discussing this, especially with the decisions that we're making tonight. I definitely don't want anybody out there to try to read between the lines, because there is no lines. This was just information for the board members and for the community. I just want to put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. If no additional questions, I think we'd go back to non-agenda items? Or are you done?
And I'm finished. So thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
That's me. Okay. Commandations tonight. Our first commendation goes to all the great staff members at Dearborn Federal Credit Union, a longtime partner with the Dearborn Public Schools, and especially to their public relations director, Ms. Peggy Richard, for helping to organize a job shadowing symposium for students in the Business Academy at the Michael Berry Career Center. DFCU also sponsored and presented a virtual financial reality fair on, excuse me, on Zoom, in which over 100 Michael Berry Career Center students participated and practiced applying financial literacy skills. DFCU is a great partner and a true asset to our district. So we want to thank them for that. And just, and, you know, want to make sure that we're always getting the right information out there. And if something slips by us, we want to make sure that we correct that as well. So from our last meeting, we gave commendations to Fortson High School valedictorian Amal Tahir and Rita Mase, Mase, and solidatorians Motana Al Sufi and Miriam. Thank you very much. And due to a tie in the GPAs, Fortson selected two students for each honor. So there wasn't just one slute and one valedictorian, there were two for each. Thank you for the assist. That's why we're a great team here. And those are the commendations for this evening.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
MSBO Meridian Award of Excellence.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Marcel. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative and Support Services at the Washtenaw Intermediate School District and a member of the Michigan School Business Officials Board. So I'm here tonight with my colleague Scott Little, who is the Associate Executive Director, got that right? And we are here, and we are very excited to present an award, which is our Meridian Award to David Mustin, who are Director of Communications and Marketing. So the Meridian Award, the background on that is that it is a very special award that we, that we give every year. And it acknowledges successful practices that have been carried out in school management and education. And the group that selects the award winner is colleagues of all of ours. And we get a group of them together, and they go through applications, and then they make that selection from those applications. The Meridian Award winner will be spotlighted in our, in our newsletter that goes out every month electronically, the MSBOE News and Views. And we are also presenting a scholarship check to the Dearborn School Scholarship Fund on behalf of him winning the award. So with that, I will turn it over to Scott.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to actually present the award itself, the Meridian Award. And this was in recognition of the video series that Dave and his team put together to help people feel ensure, you know, ensured that things were safe as we headed back to school face to face. And the model that they use, whether this information can be updated or not, is, one of the, one of the things of the Meridian Award is that it can be replicable for others. And I think that's what this, this tool can be for sure, that this is a great way to, to communicate to stakeholders various pieces of information in a, in a short succinct way. So we do have, Brian mentioned the check, it's for $1,000. And then there's this nice award that I'll try to keep my fingerprints off of, so that I don't, you know, I don't get in trouble later on or something. I'll settle for that.
Take your mask off, David.
Just want to thank MSBO for, you know, recognizing the work of our team here, because really, you know, when you do video presentations, when you create any communication that, that our department is creating, it's not me. It's, it's our team. It's Jacob Faroff, who worked on this project as well, Eric Chigfrank, who's back running things back there, Katie Hetrick, and of course, I have to thank my co-host, Mr. John Leach, who was part of this as well.
This is the school bus with your faces.
And the school bus, yes, these were the videos with the school buses that we are definitely going to get Dr. Maleko on. We'll be at the end about us not getting Dr. Maleko on, on the bus with us. So we will do that.
That is my goal.
And again, I want to thank MSBO for recognizing the work that, that we did. You know, for those who aren't familiar with the organization, it, it's the business organization, a professional organization for the state of Michigan. And many times, we think of just, you know, guys like Tom Wall, who are part of this. But it is much bigger than that. MSBO provides so much support, so much professional development, so much information for all non-instructural areas in, in school districts across the state. So their work is phenomenal in what they do and supporting everybody and providing all of that. So, so I do truly appreciate what they've done here tonight. And again, I do want to thank Dr. Maleko for supporting the work of, of our department. And I want to thank all of you as well. Not every school district has a communications department. All the big ones do. All the big ones do. But not everyone does. And so I truly, truly appreciate that this board, Dr. Maleko recognizes the importance of a strong communications team and the value we add. It's in your strategic plan. And so, like I said, truly, truly appreciate all that you do.
Thanks to you and your team. Next item?
The Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards.
Good evening. My name is Don Mack. I'm the current president of the Exchange Club of Dearborn. I'm joined this evening by Exchange Foundation Vice President Robert Platt, Exchange Foundation Treasurer Dr. Andrew Mazzara, and Exchange Board and Dearborn School Board Trustee Patrick Di Ambrosio. First, I wish to thank the Board of Education and School District, School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its Academic Excellence Award at tonight's meeting. We recognize the 2021 valedictorians of Dearborn's three comprehensive high schools. We also thank the high school principals and Executive Director Dr. Jill Chokel for their help in administering this award program. It is indeed greatly appreciated. The Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for more than 95 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of the programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. This evening, we present the 2021 Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards. This year's valedictorians, named by their high schools, will be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. This year, we have an unusual but delightful situation where two outstanding Fortson High School scholars are named as co-valedictorians of their graduating class. In this instance, the co-valedictorians will share the $1,500 cash gift. The Academic Excellence Award Program aims to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. It is now my honor to present the cash gift to each of our 2021 valedictorian. The first valedictorian recipient from Dearborn Highs is Selena Bazey. Now, she is out of the country, so would you like to, please? Thank you so much. The second recipient this evening is from Edsel Ford, Mrs., Mrs., Ms., sorry, Wei Kong Wen. The co-valedictorians from Fortson are Ms. Amal Tahir and Ms. Reda Mazza.
Mr. Mazza's in Africa, and I don't know if he's tuned in. He was trying to tune in to the, he wasn't able to, but I will hand it to him. Thank you very much.
That's a mister.
Congratulations to all the recipients and all the valedictorians. It is quite an accomplishment. Now, there is one catch, however. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon, as are guests, of course, and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education. We will contact the recipients in the months ahead to find a convenient time for their visit. Again, congratulations to the award recipients and their families. And again, thank you to the school board and school administration for their help and support.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations. No, tonight, a question. Next item with Dave.
I, I have them.
Okay.
I do. I have this, Dave.
The suspense is killing me, Dave.
It's incredible. Again, team players here coming to the assistance. Somewhere between.
They're going to take your award back.
Yeah, I know.
Take your award away.
Somewhere between getting an award and taking pictures of other people getting an award, I misplaced my list of donations. So there's some were floating around. My apologies. Let's start off with the donation of $125 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation, to be used to adopt an animal from the World Wildlife Fund. A donation of $4,000 has been offered to William Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for I Survived: Learning Through Historical Fiction. That's not a book about me trying to get through tonight's meeting here. A donation of $3,375 has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Camp Invention Summer Experience. A donation of T-shirts and a card display has been offered to Smith Middle School by La Fontaine Automotive Group to be used during the eighth grade carnival celebration. A donation. A donation of $200 has been offered to Smith Middle School by Dearborn Federal Savings Bank to be used during, for the eighth grade carnival celebration. A donation of sweet treats and food has been offered to Smith Middle School by Lolly By Golly to be used for the eighth grade carnival celebration. And that. A donation of $200 has been offered to Smith Middle School by State Farm Insurance to be used for the eighth grade carnival celebration. Those are donations tonight and hopefully I am done.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Jane Maza to come up. I just asked the President Thorp. We have some really good news. She gave me a call Friday night, some real positive news to share our DFT president.
Thank you, yes. Hi, everyone. Good evening, President Thorp, Dr. Maleko School Board members. Yeah, I called Dr. Maleko Friday night because I was contacted by AFT National that I put in for a grant. AFT National was offering them to public schools to encourage kids to come back into the buildings. And actually, I think we're the only one in Michigan that won and I got about 90,000. I told you 110 and then I forgot they changed it, so it's 90,000. So we'll be using this money to promote different activities. Some of them are the concerts this summer that the city's having. We're going to be passing out books to kids. We have, I put in the grant money to give each school some money to have a back to school celebration. And on Count Day, we have money budgeted to have a Count Day raffle. So it's all going back to the kids, so it's great news.
And you said it was 90,000?
90,000.
Great.
I asked for 110 and I thought I got all of it.
Always ask for more.
Always, yeah, always. Thank you.
Thank you.[1796.53]